Good evening and welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Indian River County Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? None?
Our first item of business is the approval of two sets of meetings. The minutes for two sets of meetings, the first is July 25th, 2024. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Five seconds.
Okay, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second is the August 8th, 2024 minutes. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda. One is a non-consent item and the other is a public hearing. We'll start with the non-consent item, and that is T-Mobile Wireless Tower. It is a request for a major site plan and administrative permit use, approval for 100-foot-tall wireless tower. Tower Ventures is the applicant. Forsight Group LLC is the agent. The zoning is IG General Industrial. The land use designation is Commercial Industrial. And I guess we'll, for this and the public hearing, any expedite communications disclosures? None? Good. And we'll swear in anyone who would like to talk on either one of these subjects. Please stand and get sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Good. We'll start with the staff presentation for the T-Mobile Wireless Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record and for all in attendance, my name is Patrick Murphy. I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Development Services. As the chairman stated, this is for the T-Mobile Wireless Tower. It's administrative permit use. For the location, the tower is located, or it's going to be located, at the south side of 45th Street, approximately 2,000 feet east of 58th Avenue. It's going to be located in the very southeast corner of what is the 45th Industrial Complex, which is under construction right now. Most of the buildings have been built, and there's just a few that are being built. All the stormwater improvements on that site have been completed. The driveway has been completed, all the internal driving aisles and parking spaces. So all the infrastructure for the industrial complex is completed. This is going to be buried back in the very southeast corner behind one of the buildings. Aerial plan, just to kind of acclimate you to what the site looks like and its neighbors, to the west of the site is the Ken Gregory Produce Distribution in an FPL substation. To the east is Reliable Septic in a mobile home park. To the south is a mulching facility. You can see on the map in the blue square, that is where the tower facility is going to be placed. And then the red circle is actually the closest residential dwelling. It's about 600 feet to the northeast. This should actually read Site and Landscape Plan. It's a combo plan. Because this site is going to propose only about 950 additional square feet, it has a very de minimis effect on stormwater, and therefore it will not be required in any stormwater improvements. That is also why you don't see a stormwater slide that you traditionally see with our projects. It's a 100-foot steel tower with a six-foot lightning rod. It has a break point at 59 feet, designed to, in the very unlikely event of a catastrophic failure, the top of the tower would come down first and then the other tower, although it's extremely, extremely rare for these towers to ever really come down. They're engineered extremely well, and they're built very strong. The tower site, it will be surrounded by an eight-foot-tall wooden fence with the fence side out, so it has anti-climbing for it. It's required to have trees around the site to help buffer the compound. They are going to be planting six red maple canopy trees, 13 understory trees comprised of Sweet Bay, Magnolia, and Dahoon. None of the existing trees that were canopies were going to be affected. In addition to the eight-foot fence, the site itself already is surrounded by a six-foot chain link, so it's going to be very secure. It will have all the proper signage that is necessary for it. The tower code requires, based on the height of the tower, two antenna minimum, so that they can be co-located in the future to reduce the proliferation of towers in the county. This tower will have actually four antennas on it. Moving to the recommendation, the site plan has met all of the 971.445 specific land use criteria. Just wanted to mention that. That criteria deals with height setbacks, camouflaging, the base being screened. All of those items have been exhaustively reviewed and approved. And staff now recommends that the PCC approve the administrative permit use for a T-Mobile Communications Tower with the conditions listed in the staff report. Those are conditions are, the applicant will be required to provide a letter, an affidavit, stating that if the tower was ever to not be used anymore, it would have to be removed, and that all landscaping, eight-foot-tall wooden perimeter fence, and the required signage shall be in place prior to issuance of a certificate of completion for the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. The applicant and their RF engineer are represented here today if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the right? Beth, go ahead.
The package says the facility shall be deemed abandoned if they discontinue their service. Does that mean that if they wanted to come back, they'd have to start the process all over in terms of permitting?
For permitting, they would. They'd have to reestablish the electric connections to the tower. They wouldn't have to go back through the administrative permit use because the tower itself would be approved. It would have been installed and the CFC issued for that, so what they would need to do is get building permits for the electrical connection, because if it was abandoned, that would have been turned off, the circuit basically removed. So if it was abandoned, they want to start back up, they just really need to go through the building division to reestablish that service. They wouldn't have to come back before this process or go through site plan, because all of that would have already been approved. Sure.
Yep. Just a couple of quick questions. One is the access to the tower. Is that through the access off of 45th Street or?
Yes. Yeah, they're going to access the same driveway that they use for the industrial complex, and then they have a concrete driveway connection to the internal driving aisle of the complex to access the tower compound.
And I know we dealt with this a long time ago regarding the residential structure that was nearby and certain distance away from breakoff points and so forth. Does this affect the property to the south, the mulch facility, if they ever wanted to do something or not?
It should not affect that whatsoever, no.
What's the distance away from their property line approximately?
To the end of the industrial complex?
Yeah.
I'd say roughly it's about 200 feet.
Okay, so it's more than enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sir. The only question I have, and I know it has to do with height regulations, but you mentioned catastrophic failure, and I know 100 feet is not a lot when we're talking about aircraft, but they are in the flight path of the airport. My question is why there's not a regulation to have that tower lighted?
So lighting-
Again, catastrophic failure, airplane is looking for a place to land at night, mechanical failure, tower's not lighted. I know that's low.
Right.
But that was the only question I had.
So lighting of the towers is actually regulated by the FAA, and any tower under 200 feet would not be required to light the tower. They did submit their site plan to the Vera Beach Regional Airport, and it was reviewed and was accepted. They did set a maximum height of 100 feet. There could not be any more than that. Based on where the active runways are located and which way flights would come in and out, they decided that that was the height that was the maximum they could allow, but they did not require any lighting above and beyond what the FAA would have required. Thank you. Sure.
Okay. Any questions to the left?
Mine were all answered.
Oh, we good?
I have a brief one. Is the removal after abandonment, is that boilerplate, or is it unique to a tower like this, or what's the story there?
It's boilerplate. That's a code provision right out of the tower code for abandonment.
It only applies to towers?
Correct. That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And there will be four antenna on this, and can they have more than four? Is there room for more than four?
They could have room for four, but due to the spacing between the antenna, once you get down to a certain height above the ground, you're really not getting any bang for your buck on your signal transmission. So they're going to take, obviously, the top tower height. T-Mobile will, which I believe is about 95 feet above ground level, and there's going to be three carrier antennas that are going to be permitted underneath those. Once you get below that, you're really not going to get any kind of signal strength at all. With the height of towers, the height is all about your signal. The higher you go, the farther the signal travels. So if anything goes lower than that, they're just really not going to get very far at all.
So it'll be a maximum of four?
Most likely, yes.
Yeah. When you say they have four, are the three already leased?
I'm not aware of the other leases that the tower operator has, other than T-Mobile.
Okay, so when you say there's four, there's just, it's designed for four?
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
Okay, good. At this point, I'll open the floor for public questions or public comment. Either one of the microphones and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Lou Katserman. I work for Tower Ventures. I'm the senior zoning and acquisitions manager for the company. I've been working on this site with Mr. Sullivan for about two years. We're come to the end of the process, we hope, and it's a good site. We've met the ordinance. We've made every change that was required, and we've worked diligently with the staff, and I appreciate you, Patrick, all the hard work you put into this, and Dallas, and a few other people that, sorry, I don't remember names well. But I would just ask you that if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. We'll be happy to comply with the abandonment clause. Matter of fact, I already have a letter ready for you guys. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. If not, respectfully ask that you approve our request tonight, and we'd be allowed to build the tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Anyone else? Close the floor for-
How tall, how many?
Wait, wait, wait. Name, address.
Tom Sullivan, 4187, West 16th Square. No relation to the other Sullivan. How tall is 100 feet in stories? I was an ironworker for a while when I was a kid. I worked on the First World Trade Center from 86 to 110, usually 10 feet a story.
Correct.
So that's a 10-story building. Several weeks ago, or maybe it was a month ago, I was at a commission meeting where they were discussing the tower, the mortar tower that's in Gifford, and how practical and iconic that was, and that it's being used for these types of activities. And that's why they obviously didn't want to take it down, but the iconic nature of it meant a lot to the community. But I didn't even know this was on the agenda this evening. I talked to a planner several months ago, because I go in there once in a while, and he said, "This thing will never fly." Now, I just don't know how, I live, where I live, I see planes go over my house about every seven minutes. It's the instructors flying their planes. Now, most of the time, they're at a higher altitude than 10 stories. But they have young pilots. When you become a pilot, you have to take a tri course, where you have to hit three airports. We all remember the young girl that was killed several, about a year ago. I can't believe anyone would put a 10-story tower in that proximity of an airport. And I mean, you can tell me the rules, you can tell me the ordinances, just give me the common sense of this. You know, there are people flying here all the time, and these aren't planes that are instrument-rated, and a lot of the pilots aren't instrument-rated. And putting a 10-story structure that close to an airport, a little regional airport that has a lot of, you know, pleasure planes, people, I go eat at Cannon's on Sunday. You know what people do there? It's very nice. They fly in, okay, in their little beach crafts and their little pipers with their families. You know, I just think, I don't know, I think to put something like this that has the potential for an accident, and secondly, when I just heard Joe Fleischer say, "We're all about sunrises, not highrises," you know, I'm starting to wonder what's happening here. Like, are we forgetting where we are? We're going to put a 100-foot tower. They can go out west and put the tower. And again, I don't know if anyone lives in that area. They say, you know, you go outside and you look up, you try to find, matter of fact, go over the bridge to the beach, I think those two spires are 12 stories. Am I right on that?
13, I think.
13.
Yeah.
Take the top three stories off, and that's what you're going to be looking at.
Well, the fact is that the airport has had an opportunity to comment on this, and they didn't, they don't share your concerns.
Right. Right. You know, a lot of people don't, the only thing I can do is express my concerns. You know, I'm not worried about that. I mean, I, I didn't see, was this noticed in the paper? I guess it was.
Don't know. Don't know how you ended up here.
Well-
Don't know how-
Doesn't it have to be noticed?
The county did follow the notice procedures, and there was a sign placed out at the front of the site there for a minimum of 30 days before the hearing date.
Okay. That would be an interesting, okay, that's another interesting thing for me, just to talk about procedural stuff. The sign that would be placed in front of that area would be about, would you say about this thing? Did you say about that thing?
Roughly.
Okay. And what street was it on?
45th.
45th. What part of town? Does anyone, is it an industrial part of town, is it not? I just don't think this was properly noticed. Okay, and we can say procedurally, it met what you all wanted to meet, but if you put a sign that big on 45th Street with people driving by, okay, and the other side, the other side of the street is industrial, people aren't going to notice. This had a-
I think your second complaint is a complaint that you should go over with staff, if you've got major complaints about how it's, how this is noticed.
I've been going over that with staff for about four years. Okay, my, you know, now I'm trying to go over it with the commission. Okay, I attended this meeting, once again, so I can pick up procedural inputs and see how this works. As I said, when I walked in here, I was more concerned about the second item on the menu than the first. Okay?
That was the notice.
Now it's the notice, and it's also, if it were noticed, would more people have my point of view that they don't want a 10-story tower in that area?
Go ahead.
Actually, I wanted to ask Susan, can you, can you describe what the notice requirements are?
Yeah, so I know one of them is going to be, there's a mail lane from a certain foot.
Let me handle that, sorry.
And I was just going to ask staff to see if they actually did this, because-
Absolutely.
It's, I'm sure they're well-versed in knowing what they're required to do.
For the record, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning Development Services Director. So the level of notice is commensurate with the level of the request. And again, we have three layers, if you will. Permitted by right, which is, can be a staff-level approval unless it's over a certain threshold, which it comes to you all. Administrative permit, which is sort of our middle tier, and that's what this is today. This is a tower in an industrially-zoned area, so it's, it rises to the occasion of needing Planning and Zoning Commission approval, but that's not a special exception or a PD, which is our highest level. Rezonings, special exceptions, and PDs require, so to answer the immediate question, is just the sign posting on the property. It does not involve a notice by mail to surrounding property owners, and it does not involve a legal ad in the paper. Rezonings, PDs, and special exceptions involves all three. Posting of the sign by staff, notice by mail to all surrounding property owners within 300 feet, and if it's residential, including copying the HOA, and a posting and a legal ad in the paper, and that's for P and Z and the board. So this is our middle-tier level. The sign, the notice requirement is the sign posting.
Ryan, I have a follow-up question for you. Those are our LDRs, or is that a Florida statutory?
LDRs.
Those are our LDRs?
Correct.
It's just for information for-
Correct. Yes, different jurisdictions have higher or lower levels of notice requirement and different size requirements and duration and all of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, Ryan. Being this is not a special exception use permit, we're here to follow the letter of the LDRs, and our own personal preferences and feelings do not matter.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask staff to maybe clarify something.
Hold on, you'll have a chance to do that. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the floor for comment now.
I have to come back to one thing, if I may. I didn't understand what he said. What exactly is specific to this site? I know he went through PDs and things like that, so Ryan, could you tell me what the notice is specific to this site?
This is an administrative permit use, which is a type of approval, and it requires only the sign posting. It's the only-
So, okay. So what, where we are, because I thought I got a little confused there during that explanation. Did anyone else? I heard, I heard three different things.
Three different levels.
What I am only concerned about is this one specific thing. And I go back to the notice for this was that size sign in a neighborhood that is an industrial area, and that's all that was done. Is that your answer? Is that your answer?
No, that's actually not correct. We also maintain an email list of about 30 interested parties in the Gifford neighborhood, all of which were copied from start to finish, none of which voiced any concern.
I'm on that list. Did I receive an email?
Are you, sir, procedurally, let's stick to-
All right, okay.
What's going on here.
But I'm on that list, am I not, Ryan?
The Gifford interest, the Gifford interested parties? I don't believe so.
Well, I'm on 41st. I don't know if it extends that far.
Not, not east, not east of US 1. There's a multitude of different interested parties.
All right, just curious.
Yes, sir.
You two get together afterward and figure it out.
I don't mind getting together afterward to figure it out. I like Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
My point, my point here is that I just wanted to explain what the notice was, because I thought for a minute there, everybody thought they got notified.
It's explained. Do you understand it?
Yeah, I did understand it after I came up and questioned it.
Anyone else? Commissioners, Mark?
I know the airport signed off on this, and someone commented that there was some proximity or runway or glide path and landing and that kind of thing. Can the staff expand on that any?
Yeah, so this was reviewed by both the Vera Beach Regional Airport and the federal administration, Airport Administration, excuse me, FAA, and both of them have provided letters that they have reviewed the site plan and approved its location and its construction.
But is it, does it line up with any of the runways that the students use, or, I don't understand the proximity.
The Vera Beach Regional Airport looks at all runway alignments and where the structures are being proposed, and they evaluated how that aligns, and they approved it.
Mark, you want to clarify that?
Yeah, Charles Sullivan, I'm one of the owners. I just want to say, I am a commercially, I'm sorry, an instrument-rated private pilot. I have over 500 hours. I've flown in and out of the airport hundreds of times, and it's not in the flight paths. It's substantially off the flight paths. You got flight. The flight paths are for 422, which is to the, not in the lines up, and then, it used to be 11, and now it's 12, but yeah, it doesn't. And so what I was going to say to Mr. Sullivan is that if you're at 100 feet, it's, objects in the air are not your problem, it's the ground, because there are no pilots. The only time you're at 100 feet, you're going down, because with instruments today and all that, you're no chance you're going less than 500 feet.
Oh, boy.
Unless you're on approach, or like I say, you're, and then at that point, the ground's your problem, not a tower. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, the public comment is closed.
Oh, I was just going to say, he used the word that I didn't understand. You said you were what type of pilot?
Instrument-rated private pilot.
Does everybody instrument-rate it?
Hold on, hold on. So we have to follow the procedures?
All right, okay. But I'm just saying, I'm a pilot, but I'm not instrument-rated.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
May I make my comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Any given week, I get about seven newsletters from-
Uh, any given week, I get about seven newsletters from the telecom industry, and I've been getting them for over twenty years. And there is no, I've never read an article where a plane ran into a cell tower. And we're a Memphis-based corporation. As FedEx is based in the Memphis airport, busiest airport in America after eleven o'clock at night, we've built towers all over that runway there. So, we've never had a problem. So, thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else? Good, we'll call for a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the second, um, agenda item is a public hearing, and it is, um, Schwerin rezoning, and it's a Schwerin re- uh, real, uh, Realty Corporation, and Warren L. Schwerin requests to rezone approximately seven point nine-seven acres from CG, General Commercial District, to MED, Medical District. We have already done, uh, ex parte, uh, participants have been sworn in. Staff presentation, please.
Hold on, hold on, Dr. Day. We still need to ask for, did you ask for ex parte for this particular matter? They did cite visits?
Yeah, I did it for both of them.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Sorry, thank you.
And sworn in for both of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
When we, when you asked for ex parte, uh, I, I didn't have a conflict, except that I, I just changed to T-Mobile. But where, where in the meeting would you announce a conflict?
That's not a conflict, though, Mark.
Oh, I know.
So-
Yeah, when, when you're asked for it.
But I wasn't, you didn't ask for a conflict, you only asked for ex parte.
So it would-
Do you have a con-? Go ahead.
It would be relatively at the same time, or if you knew beforehand, because you have the agenda before, you would also disclose that to myself and to Lisa, Ms. Patton, over there, and you would have to fill out a nice little eight B for me, have it filed and all that stuff. So it would be, if it's beforehand, then it's beforehand, 'cause usually the idea is you guys get the agenda, and you can at least let us know. Um, and then when the actual agenda item comes up, you still disclose, um, that you, you know you're abstaining from your vote because of you have this, um, conflict of interest. But yes, the, the T-Mobile being a customer, that's too far removed, it's definitely not a conflict.
All right. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Board. I am Cindy Thurman, Senior Planner for Long Range Planning. And tonight, as previously stated, we have the Schwerin Realty Corporation request for rezoning from CG to MED, our medical zoning district. Property contains seven point nine-seven acres and is located on the east side of Highway US One, south of Forty-first Street, in a residentially-mixed-use area. This property is currently zoned CG, General Commercial Zoning District, and is undeveloped. Purpose of this request is to rezone the property to Medical District zoning and to develop the site with uses permitted in the MED district, such as multiple-family housing. This area of the county features of the land of commercial and warehouse properties, a residential area, and has undeveloped commercially-zoned land, all lying within the urban service area. A look at the zoning map shows the property location, bordering on the east is likewise MED zoning. To the south is MED and PD zoning, which is the Woodlake Commons PD, Commercial PD, Solely Commercial. And to the west is the CG zoning, which runs all the way up to the US One highway border. And to the north, across Forty-first Street, is CL and RM Six, which is Multiple Family zoning. Future land use map shows it is an established commercial-industrial node. Everything here in the red is the commercial node. Look at the existing CG zoning, designed for general retail commercial uses with no warehousing, intended to provide for development of general retail sales and selected service activities. CG zoning district is not intended to provide for any heavy commercial activities, such as outside commercial service uses, heavy repair services, or outside storage. A comparison look at each existing and proposed shows similarities and differences. You can see here, there's a difference in the rear setback and the minimum of open space and the development standards. Proposed MED, proposed zoning district is intended to provide for a variety of uses which support major medical facilities. Uh, they protect major medical facility from encroachment by land usage, which may have an adverse effect on operation, potential expansion of facility, prohibits land uses that could cause adverse effects, effect on neighboring properties because of noise, vibration, odor, smoke, traffic, and other physical manifestation. This allows for accessory uses in support of principal uses allowed in the MED district. This rezoning request is consistent with the commercial-industrial future land designation as it is part of an established commercial-industrial future land use node. The commercial-industrial future land use node designation is intended to provide for areas for the development of industrial and commercial uses, located in areas with suitable levels of service and infrastructure for urban-scale development, located along major transportation routes and separated from residential areas, and no future land use amendment changes part of this request, as like I said, it was, is already part of an established commercial node. Every rezoning has to be analyzed per the review criteria of Chapter 902.12 Subsection 3, and whether or not the proposed amendment meets the criteria of Items A through K. Item A is the request in conflict with any applicable portion of the Land Development Regulations. The requested MED zoning designation is consistent with the subject's commercial-industrial land designation and not in conflict with the Land Development Regulations. Item B is consistent with the all elements of the commercial plan and specifically meets the criteria of future land use element objective one policies 1.17, 1.18, and 1.43. Item C, the proposed MED zoning is consistent with co-existing commercial-industrial future land use designation, and no future amendment changes being proposed per this request. Item D is in compliance with the adopted County thoroughfare plan. Access for the site is from Forty-first Street, which is an urban collector. Item E, would this generate traffic which would decrease the level of service as adopted? This request is actually reduction in trips, so all roadway segments within the area of influence would operate and accept a level of service under proposed MED zoning. Item F, the economic conditions have evolved in this area, so there are change conditions that exist that warrant this amendment making it increasingly suitable for areas, suitable for uses permitted within the MED district. Item G, would levels of service be decreased? A more detailed concurrency review will be conducted during the development of this process. Here we can see, we, all rezonings are reviewed based upon the most intense use pursuant to Section 9, Ten Point Oh Seven of the Land Development Regul- Regulations. So we can see here that under the most intense, under the existing CG zoning district and under the most intense proposed MED district, that it would be the same square footage as under both classifications. Item H, the site is vacant and densely vegetated. When the developments proposed, a more detailed environmental analysis based on the site-specific development will be conducted. Item I, the request will facilitate a more orderly and logical pattern by aligning zoning patterns in the area, particularly with the adjacent MED zone parcel and there by commercial and residential developments, supporting an overall cohesive land use strategy for MED in this area. Item J, the request is in harmony with the proposed, purpose and intent of the Land Development Regulations. Item K, any other matters? All concurrency mandated facilities have adequate, adequate capacity to accommodate the most intense use under the proposed zoning district. So in conclusion, the MED zoning district request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and Land Development Regulations. It's compatible with the surrounding area strategically beneficial for the community. It supports the continued development of a vital medical hub, meets current and anticipated land use needs, and does so in a manner that is environmentally responsible and infrastructure-compatible, and can be supported by staff. So our recommendation tonight is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approval of their request to rezone the subject property from CG to MED. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sidney. Uh, any questions on the left? Mark?
Just a quick one. This appears to be, um, uh, downzoning or, uh, pretty close to equal in terms of intensity. Is there any way, is there a procedure for expediting that kind of rezoning? Or, uh, I didn't say that correctly, um, identifying that fact? Or, without having to jump through all the, the hoops that an upzoning would?
Unfortunately, by Florida statute, it requires any rezoning to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission as an advisory board, and then to the Board of County Commissioners for their final approval.
I understand that. I just wanted to-
Even if it's a downzone.
An expedited path.
Unfortunately-
That's, that's correct. Unfortunately, there isn't one. It just, it still requires the notice, the public hearings, and to move forward. I don't know.
Okay, well, I'll shut up and make it simpler. Anything else on this side?
Good.
Anything on the right? Oh, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for, uh, comment and questions.
Good evening, Rebecca Grohl Hall, MBV Engineering, on behalf of the applicant and owner. Um, I am here tonight to thank staff for their assistance on this project and to ask for your approval tonight as we can move ahead to the Board of County Commission. And I am happy to answer any questions that might come up from the public or the board. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Sullivan, four-one-eight-seven. Uh, this is like Groundhog Day for me, Ryan. Uh, I think Ryan understands that, right? The, the section to the, um, east of this land, if, did you put up that first thing for me? And I, I really-
That one?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, so, I, I'm, I'm just confused. I always thought that was MED, right? Brian, I mean, Ryan, I always thought, and because the other section that has all the housing in it now, that was MED that went to CL. Now we have CL that's going to MED. Is that correct?
No, this is CG.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, a couple of different things. So this, unfortunately, when this, when this graphic was prepared, the portion, a large portion of this MED is actually now PD. That's the, um-
Oh, yes.
And that has since been updated, so when we get to the board, that'll change. And that's, that's the, what was approved as Harvard Bluffs is now Coast to Point. That's the housing that's under construction. But the piece, the intermediate piece, the, the rectangle that's roughly the same exact size-
Yes.
-has been MED and is MED.
Right.
I believe what you're asking about is perhaps the properties to the north changed from MED to CL at one point.
Yeah. Well, I know, we just keep changing that over there, that's all.
So, by and large, a rather large chunk of the MED district was consumed by Harvard Bluffs, so I believe, I can't speak for the applicant, but now they're seeing that perhaps there's a new demand for, for MED. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, that was just a, a question I had, okay?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, I, I have one other question that I'd just like to ask. I, sometimes I don't understand, um, procedurally, how would I get that changed with the signs, or would I have to talk to the attorney?
So, I can tell you, there's a couple different ways, but that requires an amendment to the code. So, you are free to petition the commissioners yourself to see if they would change that, um, or-
Well, yeah, I remember when, I remember when, uh, Mr. Law was first appointed commissioner, and we changed the code, 'cause he knew someone that wanted to plant stuff, and they had hired people. And they did it that day, you know, and Jason and Dylan were very accommodative, so I think I can bring it up.
That would be the county commissioners?
Yes, and, yes, Mr. Sullivan, I, I believe we've answered your, your question as far as your request to rezone. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Any questions from Planning and Zoning Commission members? Uh, none. I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We've got motions to approve. We got a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Uh, it passes. Commissioner matters. Any commissioner matters?
Thank you.
I had a question for staff. Uh, the press had a thing about height limit at the mall and the hotel, and I'm painfully familiar with the city height limit and the way it works, but county and the rest of the cities in the county are different. Is it true that the only procedure for granting the height limit change for a parcel would be three commissioners? And will it come to Planning and Zoning?
Yes, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair and Mr. Mutry, yes. So what was presented to the board on Tuesday was a, sort of a conceptual consensus item to, if we were even gonna proceed with having that conversation. To be clear, it's specifically to just the mall area. It's about collectively a hundred acres, so we're not talking about anything other in the unincorporated county or the municipalities, it's only that area. The, the details of the actual height limit and the compatibility measures like setbacks and other things will be flushed out. In an LDR amendment, will be what we call a height exclusion zone. And yes, that will require, uh, to go, to come to you all in a public hearing, and then ultimately to the board. And in order to pass, it would require three out of the five Board of County Commissioners to, to pass.
Okay, so it's not a complicated process, like, like a referendum?
It's, it's certainly not a referendum like it would be in the city, but it's not, not complicated. I mean, it's, it's an LDR text amendment. There will be a notice of public hearing. There will be public hearings conducted. It's not gonna be done in secrecy by any means. And yes, it will require a recommendation by you all, so, you know, if, if, say, there's seven, and it's, you know, a five-two vote against, that doesn't necessarily mean it gets denied, but it's an indication to the Board of where you all are. Vice versa, if it's a five-two-four, then, but the board is ultimately the decision-maker. Thank you. Oh, I was gonna say my piece, if you guys are, if there's any other commissioner matters.
Yeah, the planning-
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is, we, we have already scheduled and advertised to have the September twenty-six meeting as well. So, unfortunately, this happens every year. We get a lot of applications that kind of stack up and try to make a push, ideally before Thanksgiving, because then we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So, we're getting busy in the tail end of the year. Thank you.
Any notion of what October looks like?
October tenth also is looking like we're gonna have that meeting as well. Uh, I will, you know, teaser, on the next agenda for the September twenty-sixth, we're gonna have an actual formal discussion item about potentially switching to one meeting a month, starting next year. But we'll, we'll talk more about that next, next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, I will not be available for the October tenth. I will be out of town.
Very good, very good. Attorney matters?
Yes, just, just really quick. Um, I'm not sure if staff would be inclined, just given, not just from Mr. Sullivan's inquiries, but there seems to be a consistent inquiry about notice and notice requirements. I'm not sure if on the staff report, we could just kind of put what notice is required for the particular item and just say how it was actually achieved.
Sure.
So at least that way, that's covered, so when that comes up, it's at least already been discussed.
Yeah, well, we can just include a section, notice, notice requirement and what method it was.
I'm just thinking of other boards, sometimes where other staff or other issues do that, that require notice. They'll say, hey, we did notice this way, so it's already taken off upfront.
Okay, thank you.
So that would show up in their report?
Yeah, it'll be its own section that just says, "Required notice," and then we'll explain. It'll probably be the same two sentences every time. It'll either be the signposting or the full required.